Once again, now we'll go into public comment. I'm going to call five names. I'd like you to line up so that we can move this along. Looks like we have a lot of speakers. And then at the fifth person, I'll read the next five names. So we have Jennifer Lynn, Leano, TH, Jake Friedler, and Heather Thompson. Do you want to line up and come forward and speak your piece?
Jennifer.
This is Jennifer Lynn.
I'm actually for the consent calendar, but I'm just...
I beg your pardon?
I submitted a card for the consent, an item on the consent calendar.
Oh, okay. All right. Leano.
How much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, all right. Well, I come here, my name is Leano, I've been living here for 18 years, and I come to make a public comment on the insanity that's going on inside of this city hall right now on desecrated land in regards to the slang that was right around the corner, right around the corner from my house, that is not being recognized, and in fact is not even being a paying attention to right now. Who do you represent? Who do you really represent? That's what I want to know. I come here to bring perspective on the land that you guys are talking on right now, the shell mound desecration that's going on right now, the ritualistic stuff that's going on right now, the fact that over the last 18 years, this place has turned into an outdoor mall, and you guys are sitting in here talking about paperwork and numbers and rent and all this other shit, and nobody in here is talking about what the people are talking about. You need to have a People's Council, you need to have a Land Council, you need to stop talking about things that are on the surface layer of all this stuff and talk about money and start talking about what's happening to the people of this land and what's here before this, before this building was even put up, the reason why the police are being militarized right now. This little town, so-called little town, with big-ass Pixar and all those other companies down there, you guys are trying to protect what's in their pockets, and the fact that none of you guys are standing up for what's really going on underneath, because if you were, you wouldn't be sitting behind here on these chairs right now. There's too many people getting killed in and around Emeryville for stuff that deals directly with the militarization of these police departments. What the hell is Emeryville doing with a militarized police department? How did you all let that happen here? How did everybody on this council, including the mayor who doesn't even have the balls to even come down here and sit down and talk to the people face-to-face? How? You guys are not taking this seriously because you are in an insane perspective, you are in an insane place of being because you are not representing the people, you are representing money, you are representing illusions, and you have, you have no sense of understanding the heart of the people. How dare you? How fucking dare you? Bring somebody in here and talk about naming a street after this dude, with all due respect to him, but we are here talking about somebody who was just murdered by your police department? Can you not open your heart to understand what the fuck is going on around here in and around this city? It is money, it is slang, these are lynchings, okay? These are lynchings on the streets, and not one of you are going to get out of your pockets and out of your mind and into your heart to understand how deep this goes. Bay Street Shell Mound, Indigenous Land.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Pardon me, could I ask if you're going to feel strongly about something, if you have a piece of paper in your hand, wave your paper instead of clapping, that's kind of what we do here, if you can join us in that, I'd appreciate it, thank you. TH is the only name I have here. You, TH, okay?
We are all here to discuss the dishonest withholding of Yvette Henderson's autopsy report following her murder by the Emeryville Police Department. We demand justice, we demand honesty, and we demand closure for the Henderson family and loved ones. Also, we demand justice to be served to the public by imprisonment of the two officers who stole her life. That deserves acknowledgement, justice, and respect.
Jake Friedlander, please no applause. Jake Friedlander.
I'd just like to echo the comments of the last two speakers. I'm here with many other people from all around the East Bay who are demanding justice for Yvette Henderson, who was killed by the Emeryville Police Department following a series of events which began with the claim that she might have been shoplifting at Home Depot, hardly a death sentence of a crime, but made possible due to the fact that the Emeryville Police Department is severely militarized, over-militarized. She was shot with multiple different weapons, including an automatic rifle, the likes of which is used by the US military, and the fact that such weapons are even used by the police department anywhere in American cities is pretty absurd, but especially in a small, pleasant place like Emeryville, it just blows my mind. So we're here to call for two different things. First of all, the demilitarization of the Emeryville Police Department, getting rid of automatic assault rifles, that's not keeping anyone safe, and as someone that comes to shop in Emeryville, knowing the police around here are walking around with those kind of weapons, actually makes me feel a little bit less safe, although I'm sure I have not as much to worry about as the people of color like Yvette Henderson, who face this kind of violence day-to-day in this country. So we're here to call for that demilitarization, but also for you as the Emeryville City Council to do anything in your power to get the Alameda County Sheriff and the coroner to release the autopsy report, so that Yvette's family and the other people in this community who care about her can get some answers that they're looking for in why this unjust death happened, how was she killed, and they can move forward in the search for justice and peace on this issue. So thank you for listening to us today.
Heather Thompson. Heather, could you wait a minute while I call the next five? Colleen Huss, Jason Wallach, Lana Ashley, Lynn Levy, and Amanda Bloom. Heather.
Yvette Henderson was a mother, a grandmother, and a sister who did not deserve to die. She was suspected of shoplifting, and she was attacked while at the Home Depot, and she sustained a head injury before she fled the police and was ultimately shot in the head with a military assault rifle in broad daylight. And so we're here to demand the release of the autopsy report to Yvette's family. What are you hiding by not releasing it to her family? So we're here to demand transparency now and justice for Yvette and her family.
Colleen Huss.
Hi, I'm an Oakland resident, and I'm here to demand the same thing, that you urge the coroner to release the autopsy report for Yvette Henderson's family. And I also wanted to very briefly share part of why I'm here tonight. Imagine if your family member was murdered, and then months, six, eight months later, you needed to get this much community support just to get a coroner's report released. It is such a further injustice on that family that they have to do this and that they have to gather this much community support just to ask for a coroner's report to be released. And that's not even a step towards justice, but it's something. So that's why I'm here, because they shouldn't have to do that, they shouldn't have to have all these people here just to demand that, and it's the least this council can do to have that report released. Thank you.
Jason Wallach.
My name is Jason Wallach, I'm a small business owner in Oakland, California. I understand the Oakland police were also part of this, so this implicates all Oakland residents as well. I'm here to support the demands both of the family and of the movement here to demand a coroner's report. I don't understand, it's untenable for me to understand how public servants can't do their job within six, eight months on something that really should just, you know, shouldn't be that difficult. Obviously, to me, it's a political issue that this has not been resolved or released so far, and I can understand, I feel outraged, and I think that the folks that are expressing themselves today are justified in feeling that. I'm part of a group called SURGE, which is called, stands for Showing Up For Racial Justice. It's a group of folks that work in white communities to get white folks to really step up and speak up around issues of racial injustice. We have now had two canvases here in Emeryville, we've met some of you on those canvases, and what we found is that there's a groundswell of understanding for what, of this issue as an issue of racial injustice. We're not going to stop organizing around this, we're going to continue to push for justice in the case of Yvette, and I urge you to do the right thing.
Lynn Levy.
My name is Lynn Levy, and I also work with SURGE, Showing Up For Racial Justice, and I also participated in that canvas yesterday. We got over 100 petitions, people who signed a petition demanding that you, the city council, get the coroner's office to release the autopsy report for Yvette. Ninety-five percent of the people we talked to in Emeryville signed that petition, so the people in your community want you to release that report and also want the militarization of the police department to stop immediately.
Amanda Bloom. Amanda, could you hold up while I call the next five? Hannah Warren, Madeline Taylor, Samir Sonamso, and Daniel Lewis. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm here with all these other folks, I agree with everything that's been said so far. One of the things that really concerns me is that Yvette Henderson, a mother, a grandmother, was killed allegedly for shoplifting. There is no reason for the police to sit there and pass judgment on someone and to kill them, even if she had shoplifted, and we don't know whether that was true or not. Also, during the course of her encounter at Home Depot, she was hit over the head. I'm a healthcare worker, and I know that the kind of head wound that she sustained may have made her act in ways that weren't what she might have done if she had not had that head wound, and I think we really have to look at those instances. This happened, I believe, because she's an African-American woman, and we are having a series, hundreds of African-American people all across this country who are killed by the police, who act as the trial, the taking out and passing judgment on people. There's nothing we can do after someone is dead. The one thing that you all can do is lend your weight to the coroner's office, the Alameda Sheriff, to release that coroner's report, to be able to let the family see what happened to Yvette. And also, I think it's really important to look at the issue of the militarization of your police department. We know that police departments all across the country are having AK-47s, as your police department did. It's just too much, there's no reason to have that kind of a weapon that's used in war against citizens. I come from Oakland, and I accept that there was responsibility from the Oakland police also, but we need to turn this around, and you all seem like the kind of people who would not really want to go out and murder people in broad daylight, which is what happened to this woman. I think you really have to look at what's happening. It's not okay to murder somebody as a suspect for shoplifting. It's not okay for black people to be murdered every single day. Thank you.
Madeline Taylor.
You read my name, but I wasn't called. Leana Ashley, you said?
Yeah. Well, come forward.
My name is actually Karen Ashley, and I'm here, I agree with everything that people have said before me. I think that the capital punishment, basically, that was meted out to Yvette Henderson was just an abomination, and just one of the many instances of black people's lives being taken by police across the country, not just now. There's, because of cell phones, because of public media, we're able to actually see it, it's been going on since the beginning of this country. I also want to speak to the issue of militarization of the weapons that the police department has here in Emeryville. She was killed with an assault weapon. Assault weapons are used in war. In a way, in a very concrete way, the police are saying, "We are at war. We are using weapons that were developed for war." And those of us who support Black Lives Matter, who believe deeply that Black Lives Matter, people living in any community of color, feel that there is and has been a war against the people in those communities. We're here, I'm here to ask that those weapons be withdrawn, they have no place in the Emeryville community, and that the coroner's report be released to the family. It's been way too long, they've been asking for that for way too long. Thank you.
Samir? Samir here?
I'm just here with the mayor, yes, I'm just here with everyone.
You don't want to speak? Okay. Sonamso.
Hi, I'm really here just to echo what's already been said. As a Tibetan-American, I also grew up down the street on Vallejo for quite a while, have a lot of family, a lot of friends who live in this city, and I think, you know, the direction that it's going right now is definitely not the direction it should be militarization of police force. I mean, really ask yourself, is that necessary? Because it's really not. As a Tibetan, these are the kinds of things I expect to hear from the Chinese military, from the Chinese government, that are killing our people every day. It's not something I want to hear in America, where my, you know, my parents escaped that brutality, and they did not come here to witness that again happening to our other brothers and sisters here. So please find in your heart to at least, you know, the very least, it's not, we shouldn't even have to, like, people shouldn't have to ask for a coroner's report, you know, that is part of your job, that is part of the people's jobs to release that information. So please, just step up, do your job, and thank you very much.
Daniel, could you hold up a minute, and I'll call some other names? Vienna Okasha Hingle Webster, David Welsh, Robin B., and Lila Bugara. Okay, go ahead, Daniel.
As you know, Yvette Henderson is a mother, grandmother, a loved person, a human being that was killed right down here by y'all's police force. It's been months with this family struggling to come to some kind of peace about their loved one who they lost unjustly in an instant, in a moment, that these people should have just under, these people should not have access to these weapons, let alone have the authority to declare a death sentence on a human being who was already in a position of, had already been assaulted. I mean, it's horrendous, and for this family to be suffering for this long without any official report by the police, by the coroner's office, it's despicable, and something needs to be done. I mean, release the report, let this family move on, or at least begin to make the next step in this grieving process, which is still ongoing. And by withholding this report, it's just sinking that anchor deeper and deeper, and y'all, I know you have the authority, you have the power, and I'm sure, I would hope, the heart to release this information, to release these reports, and to do whatever you can to help this family through this. You have to do it.
O'Davis Hiego Webster? I really matched that up, but do you want to repeat your name, so you get a fair chance that people...
My name is Octavio Hingle Webster.
Thank you.
I was born and raised in Berkeley, California, just a little bit over here, and I just want to ask you guys, do you care about other humans, do you care about other humans' lives? Because I just imagine the trauma that this family must be facing, it must be continuing to face, and I hope you guys are really listening to us, because the trauma of not even hearing back, you know, since February about the details of somebody who you know being murdered is really sickening. It's disgusting, and it makes me nauseous, and I really hope that you guys have it in your hearts to demilitarize your police force, to get the coroner's report set in, and think about how Black Lives Matter can really change this country, how the police are at war with people of color in this country. Thank you.
David Welsh.
Hello, my name is David Welsh, and I don't live in Emeryville, but I do shop here and occasionally eat here, and even if I had no connection at all with Emeryville, I think this is a matter of justice, it's a matter of human rights, and it's something that concerns everyone. You know, in Germany, as everyone knows, there were approximately 6 million people, or more than that, who were killed in a genocide, and there were a lot of people who lived in Germany who knew this was going on, or suspected it was going on, but didn't do anything about it. Well, I think we're in a comparable situation here. First of all, as the brother spoke, the first person who spoke, there was the genocide of the native peoples of this country, including who established the shell mounds right here in Emeryville. There was the genocide of African-Americans, 100 million Native Americans and approximately 100 million African-Americans in the Western Hemisphere were killed and kidnapped or enslaved. And now we have a new chapter in this genocide against native people, and particularly lately against African-American people, and I think it's very important that citizens' bodies, like the Emeryville City Council, take a stand on this, and even a small city like Emeryville can make a difference in turning the tide, turning back this epidemic of police murders of black people. And I think if, to start with, I think the Emeryville City Council could take a position on the murder of Yvette Henderson. They could take a position on the extensive murders of African-American people, and they could take a resolution demanding that the coroner's report be released by the Alameda County Coroner, because this is a withholding of evidence, is what it is. It's unconscionable, it's withholding of evidence, in addition to the pain that causes to the family, which is already suffering due to the loss of their loved one. So I'd like to urge the council to do the right thing, reach into your hearts, and take a real stand here for justice. Thank you.
Robin B.
Hi, my name is Robin, and I'm an educator, and I live in Oakland, but what brings me up here today is that almost seven months ago, to the day Yvette Henderson, a mother and grandmother, was gunned down in the street for, in alleged misdemeanor, in alleged misdemeanor, gunned down with military-grade weaponry by men who thought themselves to be judge, jury, and executioners, I suppose, and we wonder why the cry of Black Lives Matter like echoes across this land right now. I think that Emeryville is now on a list of infamy, up there with Ferguson, New York, Baltimore, and also Charleston, and I think you have an opportunity now to lift some of that shame from the atrocity and release that coroner's report, release the police report. It's the decent thing to do. Thank you.
Lila, hold up a minute and let me call the next names. Tova Frye, Ruby, Thora Coyle, Kiri Kubah, and Steve Martinut.
You, you, the two of us.
I beg your pardon?
If the two of us are there. They were called up, but you have to get my call list. They were in the last batch of names.
Oh, okay, okay.
Nora.
Go ahead, Lila.
My name is Lila Bugara. There are a few words to describe the tragedy that is Yvette's murder. A grandmother, a loved mother, her family is now forced to experience what is honestly one of the worst realities, losing a loved one to murder, let alone to murder at the hands of the state. On top of that, it's unconscionable that nothing has happened, and I mean nothing. The reality is that if Yvette had looked like me, she would have never been killed. I have shoplifted, I know a number of other white people that have shoplifted, I know a number of other white people that have been armed and arrested by police, which is another allegation thrown at Yvette, and they were arrested peacefully, they weren't murdered in cold blood, and I say that to say that this has everything to do with white supremacy. Emeryville, as many other people have mentioned, is one amongst many, many cities that are fighting an epidemic of police violence against black people. Black women are three to four times more likely to be stopped by police and arrested for the same offense, quote-unquote, the same issue, as white people. Black youth are 21 times more likely to be killed by police, and black adults overall are five times more likely to be shot by police. I urge you to not only release the autopsy report and compel the coroner's report to do that, I also call for the prosecution of every single officer involved in this killing, their immediate firing, an investigation into the police culture in Emeryville that has led to this type of racist killing, and accountability for her family in addition to financial reparations. Thank you. We have the two other people that didn't get to go. Maybe we should...
Oh, you two come up. Very sorry.
Hi, my name's Maddie Taylor, and I just mostly want to echo everything that everybody has said. I assume that you all became council members or mayor and vice mayor because you wanted to kind of like have a positive effect on this city, and to me, you're not doing that unless you are standing up with what the people are saying, and the people are asking not only for her coroner's report to be released, which is like so very much the least that people could do, but as was mentioned earlier, like taking an actual stance on the Black Lives Matter movement and on police militarization and police culture of not de-escalating situations, but instead engaging violently with people and not taking into consideration situations like being hit on the head and possibly having, with Yvette Henderson having been hit on the head, and possibly like having her mental state be influenced by that, something that she couldn't control. So yeah, I think that if you came to be a council member or a mayor and you want to be able to make a difference in the city, then that's something very concrete that you can do, and influence other cities to do, like, once a city can, once one city starts doing it and starts making like a vocal statement that Black Lives Matter, then many other cities will understand that it will set a precedence and let other cities start to do it. cities start to do it. So, thank you.
So sorry.
Okay, thank you. I remember back when I first saw and read about Yvette's murder and reading the details of what happened, things didn't quite add up. When you just read the first day it happened, you read it and it doesn't make sense. So I would keep reading about it, and more and more didn't make sense. And I remember reading something that was like, oh, I think we'll get more details when the coroner's report comes out. And it still hasn't come out. So I'm here to demand police transparency when police kill people, and justice for Yvette and the demilitarization of the police force. So, thank you.
Tova Frye.
So Yvette Henderson was essentially killed for shopping while black, along with countless other black Americans, African Americans around the country who have been killed for driving while black, selling a single cigarette while black, playing with a toy gun while black, standing on a street corner while black. There's countless instances of people around the country who have been killed for the crime of having black skin. We need to deal with this for what it is. We have... We're in a state of extreme white supremacy controlling what's going on in this country. And the police are treating communities of color as if they're occupying armies. And this has to stop. Yvette Henderson was a young mother and grandmother, missed by her family dearly. And she was injured while she was shopping and asked for an ambulance, and instead they called the police. Now, I know that the Emeryville Police Department has completed its report, and the Oakland Police Department has completed its report, according to Diane Martinez, who I met yesterday, while talking to a number of people in Emeryville. And so I don't understand why the coroner's report has to wait to be released. It should have been released right away, as soon as it was done. It doesn't have to be tied to the completion of these other reports at all. And we know that it's not you that controls that report, but you can certainly put a lot of weight on getting it released if you so choose. And that's what we're asking you to do. We're asking you to put that weight on the Alameda County Coroner's Office to release that report. And also, we're asking you to demilitarize the Emeryville Police Department. There's no reason that AR-15s or other military-grade weapons should be in the hands of any police force in this country or used against the citizens of this country, or the people that live in this country who aren't citizens. It doesn't matter, they should not be used. The police should not be occupying armies. And when they get these kind of weapons, that's what it makes them feel like. They use... You know, it kind of upgrades the level of... They want to use these toys that they've received, and they want to be the macho image of these, what they see in wars when they're given these weapons. And so we need to tone it down. There was a white man who assaulted police with a weapon a week before Yvette Henderson was killed. And you know what happened? He was talked down. Imagine that. They de-escalated. And the man was not injured. He was arrested, but he was not injured. He wasn't murdered. You know, this is what happens when black folks do anything. They get killed. When white people do stuff, they get talked down, just like on TV where you see all these SWAT teams that so nicely care and act like they really care about the people that they're dealing with. And they wait for hours and talk the person down until they're able to get control of the situation. You know, this doesn't happen for black people in this country, and this has got to stop. Yvette Henderson deserves justice. Her memory deserves justice. She does... Her family deserves to see that coroner's report. And the Emeryville Police need to set an example by giving up all their military weapons.
Thank you. Ruby?
Hi, I'm not Ruby, but you skipped me, so I just went ahead and came up. I'm Vienna, and I live in Oakland, but grew up in Tijuana, around where a lot of cartel murders were going on. And living there, I was around a lot of violence. And I'm living in Oakland still with a lot of violence. And I don't know what's easier, if to ask cartels to stop killing people, or to ask the city council to stop killing people, but it seems kind of like the same thing. It should be like an easy question to answer, but apparently it's not. So I guess I would still be talking to the same murders. I ask for justice for Yvette Henderson and to release reports. Yeah, thank you.
Kiri Kubah.
My name's Kiri Kubah. I just should be able to say my own name. I've worked in Emeryville for four years. I am an Oakland resident, but obviously the borders are small and all around. It's Berkeley, it's Oakland, it's Emeryville. Literally biking to work, I go through all three cities. It's all of us, and it's a community. And as a city council, you are here because you care about the community, and you care about the people. And OPD killed somebody seven blocks from my house. They killed an unnamed homeless man, and it's explained. He was homeless, he allegedly attacked the officer. That's all we need to know to wipe it under the rug. The vigil, there is 12 people, Ethiopian immigrants, really distraught. The neighborhood was just screaming in anger and anguish and not knowing. And that's what happens when you bury the information and you try and get people to forget. That's what happens when you don't give somebody, a human being, a name. That's what happens when you bury it under bureaucracy and red tape and paperwork. You have the power... Politics made... You have the power to put that forward. You have the power to pressure the police to do the right thing. They work for you. Some of us studied government too, and we know how it should work. That's not how it's working. You can make it work that way. We are here, we're doing our best to end mass and push you that way, and push them and pressure. But you are the ones who could just say, release this, release the police reports. Let people know, the community know, not just the family. Everyone's affected. Everyone knows that elder, that family, everyone who walks by and shops through Emeryville thinks of that and deals with that trauma. Okay? And that's why it's really important that you not only release the police reports so the community can know, so the community can make informed actions on what to do next, right? And also, the community is here to say AR-15s, assault rifles, weapons drawn on grandmothers is overkill, right? That weapon, an AR-15, can shoot hundreds of meters. Your city is only two frickin' miles square. What do you need to do, six times when you're through the city? But it's a narrow strip. You can literally shoot into the next town. It goes through multiple walls. That's the kind of weapon you need? To police to protect? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Steve Martinut. Oh, I'm very sorry. Come forward. Sorry, Steve, hold up a minute.
Sorry. My name's Thorn Coyle. I live in Berkeley, but I shop in Emeryville a lot. I've shopped at The Home Depot, where Yvette Henderson was also shopping. I have been with groups of citizens to the Emeryville Police Department, to The Home Depot, to the Oakland Police Department, trying with her family to get some answers about why a woman who, from all witness accounts, was panicking, trying to flag down a bus to get a ride, to get help, was shot down. Yvette's brother told me that one of the things she said over and over again was, every day, be thankful for living and breathing. Yvette is no longer living and breathing because Emeryville Police decided to commit an extrajudicial killing. They decided to kill her without a hearing, without a trial. So this grandmother, this mother, this beloved sister is no longer with us because of multiple shots fired and an AR-15 being used. Please, I urge you, as a citizen, as someone who spends quite a bit of time in your town, I urge you, tell your police to stand down. Tell them they are not allowed to engage in extrajudicial killings. We have a judicial system that clearly does not work very well for my black and brown brothers, sisters, and siblings, and community members. And please rethink the weaponry you are giving to these men and these women. And every day, we get to be thankful for living and breathing. And Yvette does not, and her family is grieving. Please release the coroner's report. Put pressure on Alameda County. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Steve. Hold up a minute, Steve, while I call the next group. Kyle McCoy. Gigi Winter. Jamerson.
Raven Jess.
Raven? Okay. Raven, Kat Brooks, and Amrit Cole. Go ahead, Steve.
All right, that's Steve Martino. I live in Berkeley. We've heard the story. You've heard why we're here, to ask for justice for Yvette Henderson and to get the coroner's report and the police report out. I would like to change the terms of this slightly. There have been allegations that she was doing something in Home Depot. There were allegations that she was doing something else. But we know why she was killed. She was killed because she walked away from the police, just the way Gary King was killed when he walked away from the police. Or Walter Scott was killed when he walked away from the police. Or Romali Graham was killed when he walked away from the police. What is going on here that it is a crime, a punishable crime with death, to walk away from the police? We talk about the militarization of the police. That's happening all across the country. They're getting military weapons that were tried out in Afghanistan or in Vietnam. But it's not only the technology that is the militarization of the police. It's their insistence, their demand, their command for obedience, immediate obedience. And what does that mean? They're regimenting this society. We see the same style of police activity all across the country. It's uniform. Do you think that it's up to the cops to do this? Do you think it's because of individual police departments? No. If it's uniform, it's because there's a uniform power behind it, it's coordinating and giving these police departments their style. That's why the number of murders of unarmed people of color is going up. They have these military weapons, and you know what it signifies? It signifies that they're declaring war on the people. All of us, you too, when there were demonstrations in Berkeley in December of last year, there were officials from the Berkeley government that were tear-gassed, that were beaten by the cops. Members of the commissions over there, you're not safe. We, you and I, are safer because we have white skin. 600 people of color were killed in 2014. 2012, rather. It was over 1,000 by the time it got to 2014.
Thank you, Steve, your time's up.
Wow, that was close.
Kyle McCoy.
I would choose to postpone me until the family speaks.
Gigi Winter.
Yes, I'm Gigi Winter. I'm a retired electrician. I live in Oakland. I come to Emeryville a lot. I just want to say that this is an epidemic. It's like a continuation of slavery that's been going on for a while. The masses of blacks and browns put in prison, the masses of blacks and browns at... Well, browns at the border, blacks all over this country and around the world. There is a plan. It's like an ethnic cleansing, and it's just a continuation of slavery, so they're not hanging by a tree. I can't believe it happened in Emeryville, though. You sort of think it's different. But it's everywhere. This is an epidemic. And I'm just with the other people, you know, so that something can get for the family, the family can get something. We need to get that coroner's report and demand no more assault rifles and military equipment for police departments. And that's all over the country, too. So, that's how I feel.
Jamerson.
Yes, I'm Jamerson Robinson. I'm the brother of Yvette Henderson. And I just wanted to... Just want to know some answers, why, just why there was no autopsy report? Why was it, first of all, no police officers or office even called us? We had to find out on the news. You know, and then, you know, she was laying out there for five hours, allegedly shoplifting. And still, no... The only people that came up, came to was the Oakland Police, and gave us a little small snippet of a video of surveillance that didn't show anything. You know, just showed her running, and then soon as the police, the Emeryville Police car came, Officer Warren Williams and Michelle Shepard, within three minutes from Home Depot to the time she was shot, you know, it was only three minutes. They got out the car and started, he shot, he shot her in the head. There wasn't no stand down, there wasn't no, you know, saying, put your hands up, don't move, none of that. You know what I'm saying? And there is still no autopsy report. I've been waiting on that, just to see what happened, what, you know, say, what happened to my sister? You know, there's a lot of unanswered questions. As my sister, you know? I mean, it's to the police, she's a suspect. That's their job, but it is still, that doesn't get for you to kill somebody and have her children, her brothers and her family just to grieve over alleged shoplifting. Still don't know if she actually shoplifted, because if you hear the dispatch, wherever she was trying to steal, it never even left the premises. So she didn't even steal anything. The security guard attacked her, gave her a head injury, and next thing you know, they gonna come and shoot her in the head. No ambulance. You can go to the Emeryville Eye, the Evil Eye, and type in Evil Eye, Yvette Henderson, you can hear the dispatch. She wasn't resisting or anything. She was standing right there with the security guard. And the next thing you know, he grabbed her or whatever, and she fell and hit her head. And the next thing you know, he grabbed her or whatever, and she fell and hit her head. And, you know, I just want answers. Can I, can we please get some answers to what really going on? Because what's going on now, I don't understand it. I mean, I don't trust any of it, because you guys are not giving me the answers, or y'all people, I mean, not y'all people, but, you know, y'all work here. This is your job. At least give me my, give the answers, and the job, do your job. I shouldn't have to wait for an autopsy report, or wait to hear on the news that my family has been murdered. Been sitting on the ground for five hours. She didn't even have a funeral, because they shot her in the head. And it just, it was all messed up. She had no funeral. This is her memorial right here. This is it. This is, this is it. So can you please give us the autopsy report, demilitarize the Emeryville Police, and can y'all please do something to Michelle Shepard and Warren Williams, which was on a paid leave after they killed her? I mean, I, let me steal something from my job. I'm instantly getting fired. Let me steal something, or let me hurt somebody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justice. I came a long way from Atlanta. I raised him. Jamerson. I walked through Vietnam. I know what those assault weapons are do to you. What are the tasers for? Fifty thousand votes, that's a waste of money if they can't use them. I lost my baby in 2010. He got murdered in Oakland. No police report. They don't even know what kind of bullet it is. Want justice for justice. This young man and that young lady had, got babies. What are the children gonna do? What if it was your baby? Your baby? What would you do? Everybody make mistake in life. That's why we have laws. Mr. Johnson gave me a brown star for what? America. Half of my comrades died, but I made it back. Now, we want justice for these young peoples dying every day. I'm not gonna take up, and I want to thank everybody for coming out of here to help him. And heed the word of wisdom. If y'all can't do it, I'll bring somebody else in, Ken. Thank you very much.
My name is Kyle McCoy. I choose to speak.
Oh, Kyle McCoy.
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Kyle McCoy, and I understand that right as of right now, the actual autopsy has not been released yet. They have a month after a person is killed in California to release an autopsy. From the Black Lives Liberation Party, I speak, and also the Black Lives Liberation Party, and also for Black Lives Matter and Trans Lives Matter, we are continuing to fight for all these people that are being killed in our communities, and should not be able to have even assault rifles on a police force. Unless you want to bring back AK-47s within the community and be armed to take battle with the police, if you want war, we can do that for you. But right now, we are asking you guys to be peaceful and to actually hand over the autopsy report. The autopsy report, to my understanding, has been finished, and those police officers that are still on duty, they need to be fired immediately, because if not, we will come back. Oakland, Berkeley, Richmond, Emeryville, everyone will be here. And I would like to let you know that everyone to come to and view the Oakland City Council meeting this Tuesday, because that's what you call a movement that's gonna happen. Thank you.
Amrit Cole. I would again ask you to waive your papers if you can, instead of copy. Amrit.
Hi, my name's Amrit Coley, and I work in Emeryville. I'm an Oakland resident. I'm not a terrorist, I'm a brown-skinned activist. And I'm here to demand justice for Yvette Henderson and her family. She was a grandmother and a loved mother, and I know that if it was my mother, that I really don't know what I would do, but I would certainly be here, doing exactly what I'm doing now. I think it's a travesty that not cooperating with the police can be seen as obstruction of justice, but holding a coroner's report for eight months is not seen as obstruction of justice. To me, that is obstruction of justice. I think that militarizing the police in this country is a travesty, and it's unconscionable. I don't think that the city of Emeryville needs any kind of military weapons or drones. So, and the fact that we are seeing murder after murder after murder by police officers in this country who are not being held accountable is, again, more of a travesty. This isn't the America that I came to from Africa. This isn't the America that I was promised. This is the same thing as I left. So I'm, I'm basically here to, with everybody else, to say that all you need to do is take a stand, the right stand, for the right thing, for the right person, and Yvette Henderson was that person.
Kat Brooks.
Good evening. My name is Kat Brooks. I'm the co-founder of the Anti-Police Terror Project. We were the first responders that were on the ground after Yvette was murdered, and we've been walking as best we can with the family through this tragedy. And my guess is that this is the beginning of a long engagement with the Emeryville City Council. We're knowing, we're known for our staying power and our commitment to justice. I've been doing work around police terror for a really long time, and I don't know if it's because I'm some of the same age as Yvette, or it's because of my mother, or because I live around the corner from where she was murdered, but this hit me really hard in the gut, and it continues to hit me hard in the gut as we hear and repeat her story. You honored a lot of people at the beginning of this meeting. There's one more person that needs to be honored tonight, and that's Yvette Henderson. And the way that you do that is by compelling the coroner's office to release that autopsy report. She was killed in February. It is absolutely unconscionable that we are in September and her family does not have access to those reports. I was with the family when we, when OPD conceded after several demonstrations and allowed us to watch a video, almost useless video, as it didn't show the instigating event, which was her assault in Home Depot, but I was with them. Two Emeryville police officers were there, and when we made the request for the autopsy report, they laughed at us. And the officer said, "You'll get it when we decide." So the fact that it's still being withheld after those comments says to me that this is intentional. The fact that there's six months to file the civil suit, and that time has come and gone, says to me that that is being withheld in order to impede the one pathway that a family has after their loved one is stolen to get any type of comfort, to get any kind of justice. They'll never get Yvette back, but what they can get is some semblance of justice inside of our justice system. People have talked about the disparity between how white people are treated by police and how black people and other folks of color are treated by police, but I'm gonna give a very concrete example. A week before Yvette was murdered, a block away from where she was murdered, a man whose last name is Hedwick, shot, actual, fired at the police. The police retreated, they called a mental health team, and they took him in alive. He had to answer for that before a jury of his peers. Dylan Roof walked into a church, gunned down nine Africans while they were praying. He wasn't considered armed and dangerous. Not only was he taken in alive, he was taken to Burger King to get some food before they took him to jail. We have to ask ourselves some serious questions about why Yvette Henderson was not afforded that same opportunity, while hundreds, thousands of black people across this country and in the Bay Area, we're up to about two a week here. We're asking for you to release the coroner's report. I heard you. And we're asking for you to demilitarize your police department, and we'll be here until that happens. Thank you.
There are no more, there are no more requests for citizens to be heard. If you want to speak now, just come forward.
Yeah, we know that on the consent.
Good evening. My name is Dan Siegel. I'm the attorney for the Henderson family. I want to thank you all for listening tonight and for paying attention to the speakers who are here. And in fact, I'm gonna go to the Oakland City Council meeting next week and tell them how polite the members of this council are. When I came up here tonight, I somehow went back in time and thought about one of the first cases I ever did, which was in 1973, when three Emeryville detectives shot 14-year-old Tyrone Guyton in the back. So things haven't changed very much, we're just getting older, but the cycle of violence continues, police violence. I want to stress some things that you can do, and I mean this very seriously, because often, city councils and similar bodies allow themselves to be led by staff, led by police departments, don't interject themselves. You should meet with your city attorney, your city manager, and get those reports released. I know they're done. Seven months ago is when this killing happened. Neither Oakland nor Emeryville has reduced its, released its report. The coroner says, and I've been in touch with the coroner, "We're not releasing our report because the police departments asked us not to until they finish their investigations." Yes, that's true, and that was the same situation that occurred in the Allen Blueford case, until 50 people went to the coroner's office. So that's one thing you can do. I think withholding these reports is strategic. They don't want us to know what the police know, they want to impede legal action, and so on. So meet with your staff and get these reports released. The other thing you can do is take a stand on the weaponry that your department has. You know, in 1980, when Ronald Reagan started the war on drugs, there were 200,000 people in prison in this country. Today, there are 2.2 million people in prison and jails in this country, mostly for nonviolent drug offenses. At the same time, they started releasing military-grade weapons to police departments all over the country, assault weapons, tanks, helicopters, and similar things. And most police departments just said, "Great, we can use these." But that exacerbated by tenfold the alienation between the police departments and the communities that they're supposed to police. Some communities have said, "No, we don't need this equipment. We want our police to operate on a human scale, in soft uniforms, with less weapons, to relate to the community, not to intimidate, not to act like an occupying army." That's a matter of policy. That is within your purview to determine what weapons this police department has. I read just a couple of days ago, Walmart has decided to stop selling AR-15s. Well, Emeryville can stop using AR-15s. So in addition to all you've heard tonight, I urge you very strongly to act with your authority as elected representatives of this community and take control of this situation so we don't have to keep coming back here. Thank you.
Actually, the war on drugs was started by Richard Nixon, really, but anyway. Nixon was the first, first, first one.
Nixon was the first one to use the term "war on drugs."
But anyway, that's not why I'm here to speak. I'm here to speak because, you know, a lot of compelling testimony here, and every single person that spoke made really good and legitimate points, I think. And I'm a resident of Emeryville, in case anybody here doesn't know that. I'm gonna say the same thing to you, the four of you, usually five of you, that I usually say, when I make a point, or somebody else makes a legitimate point to, and that is that the Brown Act forbids the city council from discussing what people bring up at the public comments in any substantive way. We know that. But what the, but what the four of you should know, and everybody here should also know, that doesn't preclude you from making comments, just not substantive comments. So you were asked very clearly, very clearly here, by many, many speakers to, you know, release these reports, especially the coroner's report. And so I think it's incumbent upon you, this time, I hope this time you actually do it, you actually speak, make some comment to the people here, to answer their questions, their legitimate questions, and I hope that you don't use the phony Brown Act excuse to not respond, like you have so many times in the past. I hope this passionate group about a very important subject will let the city council engage in discussion that the Brown Act does in fact provide for, and that is, you can, you can make comments on this. These people asked you some legitimate questions here. Insofar that you don't violate the Brown Act, I think you should answer them. I think it's incumbent on the four of you to try to answer what the people legitimately have asked.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Come forward, Mr. Carpio.
My name is Andre Carpio. I'm different from most of the people, and I want to explain to you why. I was asked by a neighbor who witnessed some time ago, the police invaded in my house and red-tagged as unsafe, and I wasn't there. But it disturbed me because the neighbors are very upset by the amount of police and the way they were armed and ready to shoot. And since I wasn't there, for me, it's hearsay. But those people are very emotionally terrified. And what I'm doing in life is different because I want to show you. I am what we said from my pattern, I'm an inventor. And in making invention, I have to think about it, design, and produce what we call art history. This is what the art history of a suspension. And part of the, part of the red tag that has been put on the fence in which I'm forbidden to go in my own house is called safety. And I've been devoted my life to make safety device. This is, for instance, a safety device that we put on, on race car, and it indicate the G, and it take, indicate the banking of the pilot when it takes, when he goes to turn. It also has a gimbal, and the gimbal also indicates when the speed is exceeding the coefficient of adherence of the pneumatic. So this is a great safety for pilot, for pilot, for driver or race car. So to make it short here, you know, all this thing here is very emotional, and people cry and all that, and I have been asked what was my opinion, and my opinion is this. Since Nora Lewis, who you've been elect, 26 years ago, you know, you have been the main pusher of the theft of my machine shop, then the theft of my submarine, and then you have... And then you have all the destruction of my scaffolding, so I cannot finish my stainless steel roof. And now you are, you are informing.
Mr. Carpio, your time is up.
Just wait a minute. Let me finish what I'm saying, you know? Don't be rude.
Mr. Carpio, your time is up.
I already accused you of being a thief. And you are a thief, and you are using the law enforcement to steal from people. So, far I'm concerned, you are the thief and you are the criminal. If the police were told by you not to shoot, they would not shoot. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other comments? No? We'll move on to the city manager's report.
I think there was a person who wanted to speak on the consent calendar.
No, this was on an agenda item 5.16. This was Jennifer Lynn on 5.16. City manager's report.
You're right.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Stop talking about money. Start talking about.
I would entertain.
Genocide. You are apathetic. You are apathetic. You need to wake up and stop looking at these computers and listen to these people. Understand what apathy is. You, Nora Davis, Vice Mayor, who has been looking everywhere except the eyes and the hearts of the people. You. And you, Charles Bryant, need to wake up. What the hell is the matter with y'all? People here come, come here talking about murder, and y'all looking at your computers, not even listening. And demilitarize your police force, before we will. Wake up.
I would entertain a motion for the consent calendar. I'd like to pull item 5.16. But I'd entertain a motion for the rest of the calendar.
Second.
Well, I would like to talk about a couple of items on the consent calendar.
Which ones do you want, Scott?